Council members, start heading towards your seats. We have three minutes before we start. No, I don't need one. I need you to take down the oh. Council members, please make it to your seats. The supervisor's not going to be here. Um, Chris.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I'm gonna have one.
Do you need an agenda?
A bit of silence at the very beginning. Can you do the countdown and let us know?
Pat, do you need an agenda? I have an extra. Okay.
Okay, we have one more minute.
Okay.
Is everybody seated? Okay, good evening and welcome. Welcome to the December 19th, 2013 meeting of the Altadena Town Council. It is seven o'clock. The meeting has started. We're going to open this meeting with a moment of silence. I think everyone here knows Dolores. She made her home at the bus stop on Lincoln and Figueroa. She's been there years. And she passed away last night. So we're gonna open this meeting in her memory. Dolores is in a better place now. She's probably healthy and happy. Let's hope that. But let's think about those that are left here. And what is the solution? We need a solution. It is not good to let people die on bus stops. So, we start now. Okay. We're gonna call the meeting to order. And I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Knapp to introduce our black salute.
Good evening, community members. The Town Council is pleased to welcome Girl Scouts from Altadena Community Troop 70651. This troop was started in 2018 and has been together since TK with members now in fourth grade. There are ten groups, ten groups, ten girls in the troop representing the following schools. Altadena Arts Magnet, Odyssey, Avison, Norma Coombs, La Cañada Elementary, and Dahlia Heights Elementary, which is an LAUSD public school. Troop leaders are Charlotte DeWale and Sabrina Steerwald, neither of which could be here tonight. We've got some illness going on. But the girls are going to make it to the podium and they will lead us in the pledge.
Hi, we're troop 70651. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, girls. Girls, girls, come back, come back. She said. Okay, we're gonna move right along to 1.2. We have our roll call by Secretary Dorothy Wong.
Thank you Chair Jones. Councilmember Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Councilmember Connor Sepola.
Present.
Councilmember Billy Malone.
Present.
Councilmember Nick Arndson.
Present.
Councilmember Dorothy Wong is here. Councilmember Melissa Morona.
Present.
Councilmember Chris O'Malley.
Present.
Councilmember Veronica Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Rod Bryce. Councilmember Pat Sutherland.
Here.
Councilmember Alan Peck. Councilmember Reginald Wilkins.
Present.
Councilmember Doug Cauliflower.
Here.
Councilmember Sylvia Vega.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Diane Markison.
Excused.
So three excused, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we move on to approve our agenda today. Councilmember Knapp.
Good evening and happy holidays again. There are agendas in the back of the room as well as public comment cards. The agenda looks like this, and there's public comment cards that are small. If you would like to make public comment, we accept public comment for agendized and non-agendized items. If you'd like to make a public comment, please fill out the card and give it to a councilperson on either end. While the council does not typically respond to public comment during the meeting, if you would like a response, please include your contact information. This process is in place to ensure that everyone wishing to make public comment has the time to do so and that we can conduct this meeting in an orderly fashion. Councilmembers, the Altadena Town Council Executive Committee met on Tuesday, December 12th, to set the agenda for tonight's meeting. The agenda was circulated to you on Friday, December 15th. I have one change, and that is to strike item 6.2 California Highway Patrol. The officers have been called to help with the Pasadena Tournament of Roses Rose Parade setup. Are there any other changes? Hearing none, I move the agenda be approved as amended.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved as amended. The next thing on the agenda is the chair's report, and that's my report. I'm gonna come up to the podium because I wanna be able to see everybody. I'm always sitting, so I wanna come up to the podium. Good evening, everybody. I want to just express my gratitude for being a part of this extraordinary team and this group of people. The extraordinary people on the council, the extraordinary residents in Altadena, and the county employees who helped made this team possible, because it's definitely a team. Working alongside such dedicated individuals who share the same goal as I do of serving our community has been an honor and my privilege. I leave with mixed emotions. I am resigning from my position. I didn't run for reelection, not because I am tired or because I'm disappointed, but because I feel like we have a great team and we have a good foundation and it will move forward quickly and they'll do great things. And I can go on and be the grandmother and the resident I am and do it with peace of mind. One thing is sure, I am thankful for having the privilege of being part of this team. It has really been a privilege, and I wanted to look at all you guys and let you know that I have enjoyed it. I'm not saying that I was, we were all perfect and we were all well behaved all the time, but we were a team and we worked together. And a team, no matter how many good players you have, if you don't work together, you don't get to your goal. And we made our goals. We did work and we got things done. So we are a good team. It takes a village like Altadena to make sure the needs of Altedinians are met, and I'm proud to have been a part of that effort. Thank you for allowing me the privilege to serve our community. It has been an incredible experience and I cherish the memories and the relationships that I have made these past six years. So thank you and Merry Christmas to everybody, and I will see you out in the community. Okay, thank you for allowing me to say that. Now our next thing is 2.2 Vice Chair's Report. Victoria Knapp.
Good evening again. In lieu of a report, I wanted to take a moment to recognize Chair Jones. And while we will have an opportunity later for her to exit the stage, on behalf of the entire Town Council, we got a little something for you so that you could enjoy your retirement from the council. You have been a tremendous leader, an inspirational woman, and personally a great friend. I will always remember and look fondly on our time together, as will everyone that's up here who will be missing you in the coming year. So we expect to see you in the audience or online, and we will look for you at events in the community.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for that, thank you. We're gonna move on to our Recording Secretary's Report before I, tears come in my eyes, but I'm not gonna let that happen.
Thank you Chair. Councilmembers, the November 21st, 2023 minutes were sent to you all last week. I received no changes or alterations. Are there any this evening? Seeing none, I move that we accept the minutes as delivered.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are accepted as presented. Okay, we move right along to our Treasurer's Report.
Yep, working on it, hold on.
Councilmember O'Malley, get it together here.
It's a surprise card. I would just like to add my own personal appreciation for working with you Veronica. You have been amazing, amazing. Treasurer Report. For the period beginning on November 1st and ending on November 30th, we started with $1,438.78 in the bank. We had $490 with deposits and credits. We had withdrawals and debits totaling $220.31, mostly for election-related expenditures. Our ending balance for the period was $1,708.47. As always, I would like to remind everybody that the Altadena Town Council is a volunteer organization that depends on the kindness and generosity of our residents to fund the expenditures that we incur. And to that end, hold on. I got my five dollars. Oh, no, there it is. I'm gonna pass the can around. If you would be so kind and like fish it through, right? You gotta give it back to Reggie here on the end, because if you don't get it back to Reggie, these four will never contribute. So, thank you very much for your generosity. Happy holidays.
Okay, we're gonna move right on, and we're gonna have our corresponding Secretaries Report. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you Chair Jones. So this is a great holiday season time, and there's lots of great events going on. I'm just gonna highlight a couple of events for the rest of December. If you have anything you ever want posted or shared, just drop me an email, So, starting out Thursday, which is December 21st, we are having a vigil for Dolores at the Lincoln and Figueroa Bus Stop at 5:00 PM, Thursday, the 21st. So stop by. Then at 7:00 PM, the Altadena Town Council Safe Streets Committee, who normally meets on the 4th Thursday of the month, are enjoying the momentum of conversation. So we're going to have a meeting Thursday, the 21st at 7:00 PM. So that is on our Town Council website. Also, we are one month away from the Greater LA Homeless Count for Altadena. We have 10 volunteers so far, and they're accepting up to 50. So I will post that on the website, but you can also sign up at theycountwillyou.org. And we're always looking for not just volunteers. If there's a business that wants to donate coffee or any types of things like that, definitely reach out on that. So They Count Will You. And last but not least, the Great Christmas Tree Lane. I don't know if anyone else is gonna mention it, so just a reminder that the Christmas Tree Lane lights start at 5:30 and they end at midnight through January 7th. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to our old business, which is 3.1. Our Bylaws, Councilmember O'Malley.
Thank you Madam Chair. On October 23rd, 2023, the Altadena Town Council met virtually as a committee of the whole to discuss, amend, and vote on changes to the bylaws that were suggested by the Bylaw Committee. An amended version of the bylaws reflective of the affirmative votes of the Committee of the Whole was distributed for review in accordance with Article 13, Section C of our bylaws. I move that the council adopt the bylaws as amended effective January 1st, 2024.
Second. All those in favor? Oh, is there any discussion about the bylaws? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the bylaws pass. By unanimous, missed vote. Okay, we're gonna move right along here to the election of the new officers. And 4.1, our Chair of our Nominating Committee, Melissa Morona.
Thank you Chair. The Slate Committee, comprised of Doug Cauliflower, Billy Malone, and myself, requested applications from the Altadena Town Council for the Executive Committee five positions. After thoughtful and careful consideration of the applications, the following is the slate of nominees for the Executive Committee. Chair, Victoria Knapp. Vice Chair, Nick Arndson. Treasurer, Chris O'Malley. Recording Secretary, Patricia Sutherland. Corresponding Secretary, Dorothy Wong.
Okay.
May we accept?
So, do we accept this? I mean, every, is there? Should we make a motion to accept the?
You have to ask if there's any, anybody else from the council that would like to?
Oh, okay, you would think I would know that by now, right? Is there anybody wishing to throw their name into the hat or wishing to nominate anyone else? None? Okay, so I recommend that the slate be accepted as presented to us tonight.
You don't have to vote if there's no contestant, because it runs into place by acclamation.
This is their swan song.
Okay.
This is the swan song, yes.
That's right.
I move we accept the slate's recommendation.
Okay, all right, it's moved and it's accepted. Okay, great, let's move on, okay. All right, so I'm gonna hand this to Victoria. She is now the new chair. Yes. So do I go to the, do I go to the audience now?
Stay here, stay here for now.
Oh.
Okay, we are moving right along to the swearing in of new council members. I think the supervisor was unfortunately delayed at a Board of Supervisors meeting. So in her stead will be Captain Williams to swear in.
So all new council members come forward.
So John and Kim come forward with Japhena.
Japhena.
Everybody who was voted in, yep. Yep.
We all here? Now say cheese. Raise your right hand. Please, please respond by saying I do, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions. Do you accept the position bestowed upon you by the voters of Altadena and pledge to faithfully execute all duties and responsibilities bestowed upon you on behalf of the community? Do you pledge to uphold the Altadena Town Council's bylaws and ethical standards during your term of office? Congratulations, you guys are officially sworn in. Congratulations, you guys are officially sworn in.
So now I get to state my name. So now we have to change seats. I'll just say.
I have big shoes to put.
That was Altadena Town Council musical chairs. Move on to our public safety reports. There were some special guests that are here to say a fond farewell to our exiting community members. So, I wanted to bring up Ann Higginbotham, who I see right there in front of me.
Good evening, council members and members of the Altadena community. I'm here on behalf of Assembly Member Chris Holden to extend our great appreciation and commendations for the service of Veronica Jones from 2016 to 2023, and Billy Malone from 2013 to 2023. As all of us know, and has been repeated many, many times, volunteer service is the height of civic duty, and it is what keeps a community well-oiled and rolling along, working through problems as best they can. And it is people like Veronica and Billy, and also the rest of you, the continuing members and the new ones who may not know what they really got themselves into, right? So, again, on behalf of Assembly Member Holden, so pleased to extend our congratulatory appreciation to Veronica. And I did fail to point out that both of them during their service had taken terms of being the chair, and their leadership was very important. And that's mentioned in the certs, but I spared you all those details. But thank you so much.
Thanks, Ann. Possibly out of order, but I am, and I am sorry, but I wanted to bring up Jubilee Byfield.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jubilee Byfield, and I'm here on behalf of Congresswoman Judy Chu. She couldn't be here tonight, but she just wanted to make sure to say thank you for all the dedication, all the amazing years of service to both Billy and Veronica. Altadena would not have been the same without you guys, and everything that you've done is greatly, greatly appreciated.
And then, I wanted to bring up from the supervisor's office, Suzy Neemer.
Hi, thank you. Unfortunately, Supervisor Barker was caught in a very, very long board meeting. They were still going as of 6:45, so that's when I stopped checking. So, she would have loved to have been here to personally thank you both for your service. She considers you not only great community volunteers, but friends of our office, and we hope to continue to work with you. I know you're still valuable community members, and I personally appreciate that you were both just a phone call away whenever we had a question or concern, and I hope to still be a phone call away. So, I have big giant scrolls for you.
Thank you to all of our elected offices for being here tonight. It's very important to us, and it means a lot. And happy holidays to you, and please send our happy holidays back. Moving on, we are going into our public safety reports. The first up is Altadena Sheriff's Station, Captain Jabari Williams.
Good evening. So, I'm just gonna start with a few stats. Our aggravated assaults are down 9%, and that's great, because for the past two months, it's actually been up. So, I was glad to see that number go down. Our property crimes are also down 7%. And just breaking down the property crimes, our burglaries, residential burglaries are down 30%. That number continues to go down, trend down, so that's a good thing. Our vehicle burgs are at, went down 9%. We're gonna continue to do aggressive law enforcement to try to stop or curb these property thefts from going up, and we just ask the public to do what they can to protect their property. Couple of things I wanna go over real fast. Our Citizens Academy, we're still accepting applications for it. Next week, the 26th is the deadline to send in the applications. So, anyone interested, please call the station, speak to Deputy Ballion, and he can sign you up for our Citizens Academy. We haven't had it in a while, so we're expecting this to be a fun event. And then, the last thing I wanna bring up is the way we can report crimes and ask for reports. It's called SORTS, Sheriff's Department, our Sheriff's Online Report Tracking System. It's been a while, been here for a while. We stopped it for a while, and now it's back. And it's a way for people to report crimes instead of coming to the station or asking for deputies to come in. Right now, there's only certain ones that can be reported online. They are lost and stolen cell phones, as long as it's under $950. Misdemeanor vandalism, that's any vandalism under $400. And then, any petty thefts. Petty thefts are any thefts under $950. Anyone interested in utilizing this system, just go to lasd.org, and you can find it on there to report the crimes or request a report for certain crimes. This is something the Sheriff's Department has been pushing. We're finding out county-wide that it's not being utilized that much. So, for the next few weeks, months or so, we're gonna be pushing it out to the public. The more people use it, the better we can expand it. So, right now, those are the only crimes that can be reported, but if it's utilized more, then the Sheriff's Department can expand it to include other reports, requests. Again, that can be found on lasd.org. If you go to Altadena's station on that website, it shows you right there, file the report online. Anything that can't be filed online, they'll let you know. And also, for all reports that we respond to, we're gonna start sending brochures just to remind people. And I wanna make sure everybody's aware emergencies are not to be reported online. And that's all I have for today.
Does anyone have any questions? Councilmember Aronson?
Sheriff, I know the host team removed a number of unhoused by Honeybee. Do you know if Dolores was included in that group, or did just Dolores leave on her own and come back?
She was included in that group.
She was?
She was.
Okay, thank you.
Took the services and then somehow found her way back.
Captain, I have a question. We had talked maybe a year ago, maybe even longer, about whether, why the sheriff's station isn't using Nixle. And I don't think we ever really got an answer as to why. I think we should probably look into it. I was thinking about the many situations that I get Nixle reports from Pasadena and Sierra Madre for, whether it's a bear in the area, or there's been a traffic collision, and we want people to avoid the area until it's cleared, or there's been police activity, and we need people to avoid the area. Being able to send that out through Nixle, I think, would be really helpful, since we don't really have another mechanism in Altadena to communicate with the community.
Okay, yeah, I know we did use Nixle for a while, and then we stopped at the direction of the department. I have to find out if it's something we could still use or is still being utilized by department stations. I believe it is. And then, we have to have people officially trained to use it. So, thanks for reminding me, I'll look into that.
Did you have your etching event, or the etching event is coming up?
Oh, no, we had it December 2nd. It went pretty well. We had, I think, over 200 cars, and it was also a toy drive at the same time. We plan to have another one very soon. We like having it at the big venues like that, because we get more people, and we're able to utilize more tow trucks and things like that.
And how was the toy drive?
Toy drive went okay. We got some toys. Enough to pass out, so.
Okay, any other questions? All right, happy holidays, thank you so much.
Yeah, Merry Christmas to you guys all, and to the community. Happy New Year, have a safe New Year.
And now, we're gonna hear from L.A. County Fire, Maria Greiken.
Hello, happy holidays. For November, there were a total of 356 responses in Altadena. 276 of those were for medical calls. And what's interesting is that we actually transported 327 patients. So, I had to double-check that. So, I did kinda spot-check some incidents, and so, a lot of them could have been incidents where there were more than one, because it comes up as one incident, but there could have been four. One was a traffic collision with five. So, that, because that usually doesn't happen. We did have three fires. We had a trash fire on Marengo, a cooking fire on Manor, and then we had another very, very small fire. No details were available, but from what I could glean from it, it might have just been a tree, or a bush, or something. And then, we had one instance of wires down. We had 12 traffic collisions. Three of those involved pedestrians. Oh, I didn't fix the last one. The two, the one on the 16th and the 17th were both people crossing the street and got hit. And the one on November 26th was actually versus a bicyclist. I forgot to put that in there. But it was, they did not get hit by the car. It was, they were riding their bike, coming along, and went by a parked car, and the parked car opened their door. So, that's how they got hit. Safety tip of the month, holidays, it's all about the holidays. So, if you have a real tree, please keep it away from fireplaces, radiators, or other heat sources, and be sure to keep it in a sturdy water-holding base and replenish that water regularly. Check your lights for frayed wires, bear spots, or gaps in insulation, broken or cracked sockets, and excessive kinking or wear. The wires, when you check them, should not be warm to the touch. So, if they're warm to the touch, replace them. And don't leave your holiday lights on unattended, whether it's your tree, or your home, or any decorative lights. Ensure that your tree and all decorations do not block any exit ways, and don't put your wrapping paper in the fireplace. A lot of people still do that. That is it for the report, are there any questions?
Councilmember Morona?
Thank you, hi. On November 2nd or 3rd, there was a home fire in the late hours of the evening. I didn't hear described, many people have asked about that.
You know, I couldn't remember if it was this meeting or if it was in La Crisena that somebody had asked me about a November fire. Nothing came up.
Wow, okay, because the house is condemned, and the neighbors were very concerned. It was almost like an explosion, and then the entire garage went up.
Nothing came up.
Wow. They did respond, so just mention.
So, I'm wondering if it got coded as something else?
Maybe.
Because I was specifically looking for that. I remembered that somebody asked, and then I thought, maybe it was La Crisena.
I'll send you an email, maybe we could talk about it.
Yeah, if you could send me an email, that would be great. And now I know it's November 2nd. I can kinda look at the calls from that day and see if any of them match that.
Sounds good, thank you very much.
But yeah, we didn't have a fire call recorded, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
No problem.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes, do you happen to know, ma'am? It's the incident on 1110 at 2000 Block of El Molino. Was the collision with another vehicle, or was the collision with that sign?
I don't know.
I'm just trying to find out if it was, that somebody ripped through the stop sign and hit this other big sign and knocked it over.
I can check on that for you.
I'd really appreciate it. It helps us, it helps us in knowing when we're looking at, you know, safe walks.
Yeah, I can look up that incident in particular. I don't look up, the only ones I tend to look up in particular are persons trapped, to see if they actually were, and then versus pedestrian, or into a structure, or something like that.
Well, I know there was no ambulance, and what I'm guessing happened is that someone blew through the stop sign and whacked the sign on El Molino. And that made the big noise, it scared all the neighbors.
Ah, okay.
And the car was towed away, so.
Councilmember Wong?
Hi, Maria. So, we're about to have a big deluge of rain, potentially. I didn't mention it earlier, but do you have any tips? We have Ready, L.A. County, and then L.A. Rain, but from the fire department perspective, do you have any tips for everybody?
Just if you're in the foothill areas, anybody in foothill areas, sandbags. To put out sandbags, sandbags are available at all of our fire stations, and most of our fire stations also have sand, but not all of them. But they do all have sandbags, so I would just make sure that you have sandbags. And when you're filling sandbags, just remember you only fill them halfway, and then fold them over.
Awesome, and then my radio did go off today. I think my cat hit the button, and then it went into talking about the upcoming rain. More radios.
Yeah, Public Works hasn't issued any warnings. It's mostly Phase 1 warnings, so we don't really do anything with those. So, there's not, it doesn't appear to be too much of a concern in the Bobcat burn areas, or any of the other burn areas.
Councilmember O'Malley?
Just real quick, the incident on Manor Street, is it West Manor or East Manor?
Don't know.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Okay, happy holidays to you, thanks for being here. I'm gonna get my, from you, my radio from you, one day.
Okay.
I have to put my, we're never in this, we just are not crossing paths.
Did you register for it?
Yeah, originally, yeah.
Okay, all right, so, all right, let me tell, okay, well, she had her hand up first, so. I actually brought a radio for Diane, because last-
Oh, and Diane's not here!
Last month, I told Diane, I'll bring your radio. So, I logged it under her name, but I'll change the number to your name, and I will give you Diane's radio, and I will-
Diane, I'm waving to you if you're watching online. I'm sorry you're not feeling well.
So, you lucked out, I've got a radio for you tonight. I'll get you next month.
Okay, so you'll have two next month, one for Diane and one for Sylvia. Okay, thanks so much, Maria.
Okay.
Okay, we are moving on to general public comment.
Thank you, Chair, I have two. If they can both come up to the mic, we'll start with Shay Shay Yancy. And Mark, if you can follow her, that'd be great. If there are more cards, please send them to either end of the tables. Oh, they're back there.
Good evening, everyone, and happy holidays to all. Let me offer my congratulations to all the newly-elected- to all the newly-elected council members, and some of you will be really missed. But I give a heartfelt congratulations to John Carney, Census Track 460302. When hearing about how passionate you were about the work that you've done for Chris O'Malley, and I believe Nick Arzon and others, I believe that your commitment and dedication has helped you attain the post. Therefore, I knew that you would be the perfect candidate for this position for our community. So again, congratulations, and best wishes to your next adventure, and I have no doubt that you would do great things for Wes Altadena. Thank you.[1268.82][1268.82][applause]
Because I know you want to finish before eight. Mark Mariscal, Rotary Club of Altadena, Friends, and the Foundation of the Altadena Library, and our great director from our Altadena Libraries here, and not on the agenda today, but Nikki's here, as always. But I do want to just say a couple things. One, Dorothy, what you said with the calendar. So Thursday, Melodio Mariposa is having a concert at Altadena Town and Country Club. It's their only annual fundraiser. The rest of their concerts they do are free. Rotary Club has really kind of embraced what they've been trying to do, because they're doing free concerts, and it ties in with our free concerts as part of the Summer Concert Series. So I think that's great. But they also received a nice grant from Supervisor Barker's office, and so I think that was really great, and that's really helping them move forward with the lessons that they do. So I think we need to thank the Supervisor's Office for that, too. And then we need to thank the Supervisor, because I know she brought, and Captain just left. But, you know, Sheriff Luna was here for Christmas tree lane lighting, and I thought that was really great to see him come out and have him. And so when we're, some of us were back there maybe talking to him, and he said, "I just, I've heard about this. I just can't believe the crowd size and the stuff." He was really impressed. And I think it's really important that we understand that our community does those events, you know, Combination Library, Town Council, CTLA, all the different organizations. And so it was great to see Sheriff Luna there. And then I'm just gonna leave you with this thought. BOY and COY from the Chamber of Commerce stands for Business of the Year and Citizen of the Year, and it's unofficial still, because I haven't heard an official thing, but I will tell you that what they do have in common is the Rotary Club of Altadena. Thank you very much.[1386.14][1386.14][laughter]
Thank you, Mark. Carol, can you come up? Calling Carol up.
She is. She's right here in the front. So first of all, I want to thank the Altadena Town Council for all your service by providing updates to our community. As an unincorporated area of LA County, our voices are often not heard. Your tireless champion to serve our diverse community, it does not go unnoticed. As a resident for the past decade, and a resident of Pasadena, I appreciate all the work that you do behind the scene. And on behalf of my tract, Veronica Jones, is she here? Oh, thank you so much for your grace and your diplomacy by leading the Altadena Town Council during these unprecedented times. I appreciate all the work that you've done for our community, always responding in a timely manner to ensure my voice and our tract is heard. So thank you so much to everyone here at the Altadena Council for all the hard work that you do for public safety. So thank you.[1473.82][1473.82][applause]
That's all I have for public comment, Chair.
Thank you so much for coming and making public comment. We are moving on to our Census Track reports. We have one Census Track report, 4613, which, because Diane is going to be, Diana's ill, she was on a conference call earlier that Doug Cauliflower was on with her about this project, so Doug will report for her.
Okay, thank you. This is actually a joint report for Census Tracks 4612 and 4613. The Alt- I'm talking about the Altadena Drive/Washington Boulevard Road Improvement Project is slated to get started right around June 1st. The project encompasses Washington Boulevard from just east of Altadena Drive to just east of Allen Avenue, and then Altadena Drive, starting at the intersection of Washington and Altadena Drive, going north to Canyon Close Road. Notices will be in mailboxes right after the 1st of the year to those residences and businesses affected by the project. Announcing a meeting in January. There'll be website information and other details in that mailed notice. Additionally, we will have a link on our website at the same time, so if you don't see that mail, or you forget about it, you'll get more information on the website. And then as we get closer, you'll get more information. It'll be a big project, and we will do our very best to keep the community updated. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay, we are going to wrap up this meeting, I believe, in record time. Before we do adjourn, Councilmember Aronson has some logistics for you.
All right, so we're excited to have the holiday party with you to make that happen, and make it happen smoothly. We're gonna be bringing the food up to this table. Council members, as I instructed most of you already, some of you have individual jobs to get rid of some of the things. If you weren't given a job, stay at your seat. If you brought a dish, please bring it in front of you. We'll be serving the community. Community, please be aware of our awesome, let's hear it for Pasadena media.[1614.74][1614.74][applause] Thank you so much. Always patient with us, so if we can be patient as they wrap up their equipment. To do that, if you're going to partake in the food, please line up behind this cameraman. He's gonna wave at you right now. And line up right into the lobby behind him. Otherwise, stay in your seats, or wander around, but just please make sure you're not in their way as they start to pack up. Give us maybe three or four minutes, and we're going to amazingly make things appear.
Before council gets up, we need a motion to adjourn.
I moved to adjourn.
Second, motion to adjourn.[1651.14][1651.14][laughter]
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Say.